All right. All right, if we can get everyone to take their seats, we can get started. We'll call to order the special meeting with respect to the budget, Board of Alderman, for Monday, June 4th, 2018. And if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the Constitution of our citizens, to the Constitution of our borders, to the Constitution of our liberties, to the Constitution of our rights.
Alderman Brunelli.
Here.
Alderman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderman Cato.
Present.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacome.
Here.
Alderman Hadley.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujam.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Perneruski.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. With that, the only item on the agenda this evening is the consideration of the budget. And so we have a number of resolutions to implement the budget, but I would initially entertain a motion to resolve ourselves into the Committee of the Whole so that we can consider these as a committee, and then we'll come out and vote on the final product. So is there a motion with respect to?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're in now as a Committee of the Whole. So we have six resolutions to implement the operating budget and two resolutions to implement the capital budget. And what I'll do is go through with the Majority Leader to make the motions with respect to the resolutions individually, and at the end of that, or for each resolution, if there's any amendments that anyone wants to propose, we'll take them at that point. So with respect to Resolution Number One, the Chair would recognize Alderman Brunelli. And these are all, just for clarity, these are the resolutions that were presented last Wednesday at the public hearing because they include the two changes that we addressed, most significantly, the change to the 2.3 million on the additional car revenues which are incorporated now into this new Resolution Number One, and the change of the penalty for blight from $50 to $100 a day. Alderman Brunelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution Number One, Resolution Making Appropriations for Operating Departments of the City of Waterbury for the ensuing fiscal year 2019 pursuant to 9-B subsection 3-C of the Charter of the City of Waterbury. So moved.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli, is there any discussion? Alderman Giacome.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe, and I'm sorry, I'm a little busy lately, but I believe this is the appropriate time to make this proposed amendment. And I'd like to move to amend the resolution for appropriations to basically make two changes, Mr. President. Like I said, I apologize for the informality of this. I'm hoping for your understanding, just sort of working here off my notes. I would like to, and my caucus would like to amend the underlying budget proposal to transfer or to reduce the appropriation that I believe would be under, would be, I think, the operating charges, the appropriation to the Waterbury Development Corporation by an amount equal to, I believe it's $60,275, and appropriate that to the library, as well as we would like to eliminate the appropriations to the three internal service funds in the amount of $2.275, $2,275,902, I apologize, and have that also reflected as a reduction in revenues by having the Budget Office make the appropriate reduction in the car tax mil rate to reflect that extra revenue from the state. That may be, that mil rate change may be appropriate as an amendment for Resolution Number Two. Again, I apologize, just to give everyone an idea, though, of what we're asking.
Okay. So the change would be coming out, for the first one of the $60,275 would come out of the general government allocation to WDC, and it's in there? That's where that money would be for WDC? Is that right, Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay. And then it would go over to what is under Human Services, the Silas Bronson Library, and you'd put that additional funds in there.
Correct.
And the second one is to make the change to the revenue amounts. Just trying to find where they would. Is that in this Resolution Number One, the Internal Service Fund, Sarah? Just if you?
That, I'm not sure.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking.
Oh, sorry.
If Sarah knows.
On page four of your packet.
Yeah.
In Resolution Number One, the operating charges section of the budget, it's a total of $118.5 million. That's where the $60,275 would come from, and it would be put into the library under Human Services.
Okay. And then what about the money for the car taxes? Is that also in this resolution?
The Resolution Number One is the expenses. So I think what you would need to do is, as Alderman Giacome said in Resolution Number Two, you would be adjusting the mil rate on the motor vehicles.
Okay. So that would, we wouldn't do anything?
And you would be taking the 2.3 million out of the operating charges section, that $118.5 million on page four.
Yep.
That's where the $2.3 million would come out of there. The $60,000 would also come from there. $60 would go to the library, but you'd be reducing the $412.1 million by about $2.3 million.
Okay. And then we'll take up the mil rate issue, will be in the next one. So, all right, so that's your motion, Alderman Giacome.
Correct. Thank you for your understanding, and thank you for your help, Ms. Garrett.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Nujam. So the motion currently on the floor, then, is to approve. Resolution Number One is presented on May 30th, 2014, I'm sorry, 2018, with the modification to make the change of transferring $60,275 from the WDC allocation to the library allocation, and then to transfer the $2,275,951, or whatever that number was, to the, out of the Internal Service Funds, and it will ultimately get taken care of in the mil rate in the next resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote will be to approve the amendment to the resolution.
I apologize, Mr., I didn't have my hand up in time, Mr. President, if you'll indulge me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have another change?
What's, no, 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 it's under discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You had, I apologize. No, I apologize. You know, I'm not trying to fool myself or anyone else, so I'll try to be quick and give you my thoughts and the thoughts of my caucus, Mr. President, so thank you. And you know, Mr. President, when we began this process, I know in talking with my caucus, we were, especially myself, pretty excited. I know personally, for the first time in my tenure on this board, we were presented with a budget that actually proposed to spend less than what was spent in the previous year, and that despite the persistent budgetary and financial trouble up at our state capitol, and the continued failure of people in Hartford to make good on some of the promises that were made to this city, we here at the local level, we were going to show people we truly could do more with less. I thought it was a great message. My caucus agreed that it was a pretty good thing that we were going to be able to do to tell our taxpayers that we could persevere. We didn't think necessarily the budget was perfect, cuts to the library being one example, but we thought it was a good faith effort. Mr. President, we were a little disappointed to learn that news last week, that despite receiving 2.2, almost 2.3 million more than expected from the state for a program to help reduce the burden of high car taxes that the city was proposing to use the money elsewhere. Please do not misunderstand us. My caucus and I are not trying to minimize the importance of these funds into which the money is being proposed to be moved. I think everyone in this room remembers the days of past administrations of both parties shortchanging things such as the health insurance and workers' comp funds and jeopardizing the long-term financial health in our city in order to realize short-term gains. It's not that we think these funds are not worthy of being funded at adequate levels. We know they're vital to the city's overall financial health. It's just that as we went through the budget review process, we were told that these funds were overall very healthy, that, and I quote from page 22 of the Budget Proposal Executive Summary, "The city was committed to the long-term viability of these self-insured funds, and the proposed funding levels for the upcoming year that were originally proposed were in line with that commitment. We were assured that the current efforts to reduce health insurance costs for retirees were proving to be," I quote again, "highly successful, and that efforts have been generating substantial savings that were expected to continue to provide savings into this upcoming fiscal year. Additionally, we had been told that although workers' comp, the fund is 90% funded, its assets have been increasing, its liabilities have been decreasing, and when combined with general liability and heart and hypertension, the cumulative funding level of these three funds is at 103%. So over the past decade or more, yes, we have made a commitment to invest in these funds, and I believe it is shown in these numbers. And again, we were told, under the original proposal, when we asked questions about the funding levels being proposed for those funds, that we were comfortable with those levels and that we were not going to slack from our commitment. So, Mr. President, my caucus and I see no reason why the money that was intended to provide some much-needed relief to our families should not be used for that purpose. We understand it is not much, less than a mil, but it would demonstrate that this city views providing relief to taxpayers as a priority, and we would urge adoption of this amendment in order to do that. And lastly, Mr. President, we've all heard from numerous residents about the need and desire for a fully-funded library. This budget proposes to cut a little over $60,000 in funding from our library off of last year's level, at the same time as proposing to increase funding to the WDC by almost 40%. And while we all agree the WDC under its new leadership has made tremendous strides and is doing really great work, and that we understand the new obligations that are going to be falling upon the WDC and some of the reasons for that increase, we think a small reduction of about $60,000, I believe it was $275,000, to the library in order to make the library whole is a reasonable proposal. It would still provide the WDC with an almost 30% increase in funding over last year while restoring the library to the previous year's level. We would urge adoption of the amendment in order to do that as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Alderman Brunelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. This board can't operate with proposals in the last minute. Things have to be discussed, be discussed through caucus, through the mayor's office, through the finance office, and we had our budget books since April. I mean, you know, email us, you want to sit down and talk about any budget change, you know, doing it this way is just ridiculous. I won't be supporting the change.
Further discussion? Alderman DiGiovan Carlo. This question, I guess, can I ask Sarah a question? The $60,000 for the library, what would that be going towards? Would it be going towards that new position?
The $60,000 year-over-year difference in the library, about half of that was due to positions where people have left, so they were making higher salaries in the current year. Those will be reduced if new people are brought in. And the other half of that 60 was related to keeping a librarian or two position vacant for nine months out of the year. So I'm not sure what the proposal would be as far as where to put it, if it would be the new position, not keeping the position vacant that we had proposed to keep vacant, that's about $30,000 to keep it vacant for nine months.
I guess I'm asking the position that she wanted for the new, you know, the new hire to try to?
That was a request of $45,000.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that's the minority caucus' proposal to fund that position. I don't know where they want the $60,000 to go.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to, I'd like to first offer up comment on the library. I would like you to just think about the last six years. No administration, no administration has put more capital money toward the library in the last six years than this administration. None. None, at least that's documented that I'm aware of. The library has had enormous capital investment, all-new windows, the front entrance, computer upgrades, interior upgrades, IT, and the fact is, is that we believe strongly in the library. But at the end of the day, we also believe strongly in what every other department had as shown and demonstrated through every budget process over the last six years, that you've got to find a way to do more with less. And the fact is, is that we have not seen that demonstrated from the library at this particular point in time. And, you know, to be quite frank with you, as you know, I took the very bold step to terminate the person that was in charge of the library just a couple of years ago, and brought on the new library person, who by the way, by all accounts, is doing an excellent job, but in her first year, or year and a half, I think that, you know, we need to make sure that, as a department has, she recognizes and fully understands what the budget process is all about in an urban environment, in a state environment that we're dealing with, and I'm not saying that she hasn't worked hard toward achieving those goals, but the fact of the matter is, is that there's not a department in this city that hasn't made some sacrifice. And it's not at the public's behest. Now, you might recall in the paper just this week, the library received a $450,000 gift from a great Waterbury family, two sisters who passed away. They've got 1.2 or 1.3 million in the library fund, plus another $450,000. I mean, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, we could, the library knows they can restructure that position. That's a developmental position. That's a position that could certainly be used to be funded by those funds. It's something that fits into the restricted and non-restricted of the library foundation and the library fund, and that there's no reason why the taxpayers should be paying for that, quite frankly. And so that's my position on that. I'll talk about the other $2.3 million when we get to it.
Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Alderman Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to answer Majority Leader Ernie Brunelli's concern, I did bring up the suggestion last week to the President concerning moving of the funds for the library from the WDC funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Both of those are in this amendment, so if you want to talk about the 2.3, this would be the time.
Okay.
To do it.
So, thank you. So the $2.3 million, yes, Alderman Giacome is correct, it is something that we weren't counting on when we put the budget together. I will point out that even though we did receive the $2.3 million in the extra car tax money, we haven't gotten it yet. And we've been down this road six years in a row. Six years in a row, whether it's ECS funding, whether it's some form of municipal grant, whether it's some form of municipal aid, we have been on the short end of the stick from what has been, what the state of Connecticut has told us that they're going to give us. And this is one of those funds. I don't, I hope we get it, but certainly to drop the mil rate and then not get it, what kind of a message does that send to our taxpayers? You know, we are a city that has managed to survive the worst crisis that the state of Connecticut has ever been in. We have seen year after year consistently mid-year cuts and a reduction in state aid in every way, shape, and form you can imagine, from pilot money reduction, to ECS money reduction, to school transportation reduction, to municipal relief reduction, to low-stip funds reduction. We have seen it all. And so has every other city in the state. Some of them are in crisis because of it. You just need only to read the newspapers every day, and you can tell which ones are. Small towns, teeny little tiny towns in Connecticut are in crisis over because the little bit of money that they were relying on is no longer there for them. So be irresponsible to send a message to the taxpayers on a promise that may not even be fulfilled. Now, if we had never seen cuts before, you might say to yourself, "Well, you know, what's the likelihood that they're going to cut it?" Well, I'll tell you what the likelihood is. It's more likely than not that we're going to see some sort of mid-year budget cuts. We may not ever see any portion of this $2.3 million. So the responsible thing to do is to put it someplace that continues to make the city healthy and stronger, and fiscal strength is what this city has seen year over year after year, and that's why bond rating houses have continued to recognize that success and given the city the highest bond rating of any city in Connecticut with the exception of Stanford. I mean, that's the facts. So I understand. Do I want to cut taxes? Of course. Do all of you? Of course you want to cut taxes. We have to govern responsibly in very, very discouraging times. And the fact is, with the new administration coming in, in 2019, I don't care what party they're affiliated with, they are facing an absolute crisis to the likes of which no one has ever seen in this state. And so the responsible thing to do is to take the $2.3 million of unexpected revenue and keep it somewhere, because God knows, if we ever get it, we're going to need it. Just today or Friday, you may see, have seen where the governor says he's going to veto the legislative action that the governor can no longer make mid-year ECS cuts. Do you have any idea how much that impacts a city like Waterbury, or Bridgeport, or Hartford, New Haven, or Merritt, New Britain? I know that you're not privy to this information, and that's why I take the time to explain it to you. As the President of CCM, I hear every day the struggles that cities and towns, the most affluent to the most challenged, are going through each and every day because of the uncertainty of the state of Connecticut. And so the responsible thing to do is not to reduce property tax by less than a mil. We want to do that. We certainly would agree that we should do that if we had the ability to do it. But the fact is, in these times, that would probably be, especially given the historic situation of the state year over year after year that most of you have seen firsthand in these seats, it would be absolutely irresponsible to the taxpayers of the City of Waterbury and to the government of the City of Waterbury. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure that I understand the motion correct, correctly, or the amendment, I should say. So we're looking to switch $60,275 from operating charges and reallocating the same amount to Human Services. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then the, the second part of the motion is to remove the 2.3 million that have been allocated to General Fund?
Yes.
So that would deduct, that would reduce the $412 million total that we have here under this resolution by 2.3 million or so?
Yes.
Mr. President, can we take that, could we take that amendment, considering the fact that the resolution is seeking the approval of $412,147,262? If we remove the 2.3, that means that would be, that would not equal what the resolution is asking for?
If we move the 2.3 what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the left. If we take out the, if the motion were to pass, the bottom line of the revenue would be 2.3 million, 2.2 something million, less than it is today. That would be the effect of the motion. And then I expect in the next resolution, if that were to pass, there would then be a motion to lower the car mil rates by half a mil.
Correct.
To cover that number.
Which means that we would be, this resolution is seeking a total appropriation of $412,147,262.
Yes.
Which means that, could we approve an amendment which reduces that amount?
Yes.
We could do that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Whether we should or not is a different question, but we could. That's, we could do it, and it would just, what would happen is that number would be changed to, it actually would probably be changed to what is in the original package. I don't have it right in front of me, but the resolutions that came in the budget book that Sarah first gave us, if you were to look, my assumption right now is that that would be $409,900,000 and change, something along those lines.
Okay, and I'm assuming that the amendment would also include the fact that, obviously, there would be a reduction on, on the total amount to $409 million?
To $409 million.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Roughly. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote would be to approve the amendment to the underlying motion to approve Resolution Number One as presented on May 30th with those two modifications to WDC, transferring to the library, and then reducing the General Fund revenue by roughly $2.3 million. A yes vote would be to approve that amendment, a no vote would be to disapprove it. We'll do a roll call vote.
Alderman Brunelli.
No.
Alderman Cavallo.
Yes.
Alderman Cato.
No.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo.
No.
Alderman Dorso.
No.
Alderman Giacome.
Yes.
Alderman Hadley.
No.
Alderman Kula.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Matthews.
Yes.
So, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
No.
Alderman Napoli.
No.
Alderman Nujam.
Yes.
Alderman Sherman.
Yes.
Alderman Perneruski.
No.
Ten no, five yes.
The motion to amend the underlying resolution fails. With that, the motion now before this board is to adopt Resolution Number One as presented on May 30th. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote would be to adopt the resolution as presented, a no vote would be to not adopt the resolution.
Sure. Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
No.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Giacome.
No.
Alderman Hadley.
Yes.
Alderman Kula.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Nujam.
No.
Alderman Sherman.
No.
Alderman Perneruski.
Yes.
Ten yes, five no.
The motion carries, and Resolution Number One is adopted as presented. With respect to Resolution Number Two, the Chair would recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Resolution Number Two, a resolution approving the tax levy and appropriations for operating departments of the City of Waterbury for the ensuing fiscal year pursuant to 9-B, Section 3-C of the Charter of the City of Waterbury. So moved.
Second. Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote would be to approve the resolution as presented, a no vote would be to disapprove.
Alderman Brunelli.
Yes.
Alderman Cavallo.
No.
Alderman Cato.
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovan Carlo.
Yes.
Alderman Dorso.
Yes.
Alderman Giacome.
No.
Alderman Hadley.
Yes.
Alderman Kula.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Matthews.
No.
Alderman Martinez-McCarthy.
Yes.
Alderman Napoli.
Yes.
Alderman Nujam.
No.
Alderman Sherman.
No.
Alderman Perneruski. Alderman Pernaruski?
Yes.
10 yes, 5 no.
The motion carries. Resolution Number Two is approved as presented. With respect to Resolution Number Three, the chair would recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Resolution Number Three, a resolution making appropriations for the ensuing fiscal year 2019 for the Water Pollution Control Enterprise Fund of the City of Waterbury. So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve Resolution Three as presented, a no vote would be to disapprove it. We'll do a roll call.
Alderman Brunelli?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cavallo?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cato?
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovincarlo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Giacomi?
Yes.
Alderman Hadley?
Yes.
Alderman Kula?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Matthews?
Yes.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Napoli?
Yes.
Alderman Nujain?
Yes.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Pernaruski?
Yes.
15 approved.
The motion carries. Resolution Number Three is approved as presented. With respect to Resolution Number Four, the chair would recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Resolution Number Four, a resolution making appropriations for the ensuing fiscal year 2019 for the Water Enterprise Fund of the City of Waterbury. So moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the resolution as presented, a no vote to disapprove it. Let's do it this way. Let me try this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Resolution Number Four is adopted as presented. With respect to Resolution Number Five, the chair would recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Resolution Number Five, a resolution adopting the schedule of fees and charges for services, licenses, and other purposes of the city of Waterbury for the ensuing fiscal year. So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve Resolution Five as adopted, a no vote would be to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Resolution Five is approved. Resolution Number Six, the chair would recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Resolution Number Six, a resolution allowing mathematical corrections to the budget of the city of Waterbury and emergency transfers for the ensuing fiscal year. So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the resolution as presented, a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Resolution Six is approved as presented. With respect to the capital budget resolution Number One, I would recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Capital budget resolution Number One, a resolution making appropriations for the capital expenses of the city of Waterbury for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 pursuant to Section 9B-3, subsection C of the Charter of the City of Waterbury. So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the resolution as presented, a no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Resolution for capital projects Number One is approved. And with respect to Resolution Number Two, the chair, for capital projects, the chair would recognize Alderman Brunelli.
Resolution Number Two, a resolution approving the capital expenses for the departments of the city of Waterbury for the fiscal year July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019 pursuant to Section 9B, subsection 3C of the Charter of the City of Waterbury. So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote would be to approve Resolution Two as presented, a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Resolution Two is approved. With that, I would entertain a motion to come out of committee of the whole.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. We're back to the regular order of business, and with that, I would... With that, I would just represent to the body that the committee of the whole has recommended approval of operating budget resolutions Number One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six, and capital budget resolutions One and Two. Is there a motion with respect to those eight resolutions?
Motion to approve all resolutions.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then, a yes vote would be to approve the resolutions, a no vote to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
All right, let's do a roll call vote, just so we get a...
Alderman Brunelli?
Yes.
Alderwoman Cavallo?
No.
Alderwoman Cato?
Yes.
Alderman DiGiovincarlo?
Yes.
Alderman Dorso?
Yes.
Alderman Giacomi?
No.
Alderman Hadley?
Yes.
Alderman Kula?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Matthews?
No.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Yes.
Alderman Napoli?
Yes.
Alderman Nujain?
No.
Alderman Sherman?
Yes.
Alderman Pernaruski?
Yes.
11 yes, 4 no.
The motion carries. The six operating resolutions and two capital resolutions are approved. With that, this being a special meeting, there is no further business to come before this board, so...
May I be allowed to speak?
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I thank you, first of all, all of you, for your service, but I, I do want to recognize Sarah Geary here tonight. Sarah has been primarily responsible for the budget, not only preparation, but monitoring the budget day to day, and I can tell you, I think that all of you have realized by now, we were all a little bit nervous when Ophelia left not that long ago, and I can tell you, I remember Ophelia telling me, "There's nothing to be nervous about. She knows more than I do." And she's as attentive and as passionate about the city as anyone else, and, you know, coming from Ophelia, that gave us all a, a great degree of comfort. This past year, as I alluded to in my remarks earlier, you just never know what's coming at you, you know, and it's not just this past year, it's the year before and the year before. And, you know, to be able to have these meetings with Sarah and also the finance director, Michael Blank, and to get assurances on where we are in every moment of every day in each of the weeks of the fiscal year, you know, it's, it's not easy to do. And to track and keep track of what she does, and she doesn't just keep track of the budget, she keeps track of what's going on in each and every one of the departments in the city of Waterbury. Whether it's the police department over time, or the workman's comp, and the fire, the same thing, or whether it's public works and capital costs and capital expenditures and equipment and maintenance and personnel, she's there every single step of the way. So I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and recognize the great work that she's done